Okay, roll call. Ms. Holly?
All councilors present with Councilor Carson, I think he's running late, he's supposed to be here.
Okay.
Oh, he won't be here. Okay, with Councilor Carson previously requesting to be excused.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Council Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda excusing Councilor Carson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Alright, up next on the agenda is the segment where we have citizen comments. We ask citizens, I have a comment card right here, and we ask that you just come up to the podium, and we will give you three minutes to make your comments. And if you're still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end and have a seat. But today, I have one comment card, and it looks like it's Dr. Kerry Hart.
Honorable Mayor, esteemed council members, city staff, I'm Kerry Hart, I'm Director of the SLV Big Band. And first of all, I want to let you know how proud I am of the way the Big Band represents the quality of life that we have here in the San Luis Valley, particularly in Alamosa. And we look at the Big Band as really being a musical ambassador to the quality of life that we have here. The reason I'm here this evening is we're going to be doing a promotional project with SLV Big Band that I think will have some marketing and economic development implications for the city of Alamosa. And very briefly, let me give you just a little bit of background about myself and what brought us up to this point. First of all, I have deep roots in Alamosa personally. My grandmother grew up here in the early 1900s, married my grandfather here. I've had a presence here in Alamosa since 1990 when I was hired by Adam State University to be the head of the music department, and I was a music professor for 10 years. And then, as a faculty member, in 2000, I went over to the dark side, is what faculty members call it, when I went into college administration. But I kept my fingers in music and was able to, in 2012, I did a research paper on Glenn Miller, who grew up here in Colorado, the famous World War II bandleader. And it turned out to be a documentary, and I had the privilege of being the executive director for that. And I see the potential of the SLV Big Band with the promotional project that we're doing, not to be quite on the level of a documentary, but it'll definitely, I think, have some long-term implications in a positive way for the city of Alamosa and the San Luis Valley. The, when I went over into administration, I was on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce and also on the Board of Directors for Economic Development. And I know that when you're looking at economic development holistically, having a good, strong cultural infrastructure in a community is really important for attracting and retaining a workforce. And the SLV Big Band is one of those components of a good, strong cultural infrastructure here in Alamosa. And today, what we're doing is we're initiating a project that will, we're going to have a film that will be synced with a studio recording that Don Richmond is going to be doing, that will have an internet presence on YouTube, or that's our goal. And the sponsors, the businesses, the organizations that are partnering with us on that will have their name out in front of the public. For anyone looking at the SLV Big Band, those names will come up.
Okay, well, thank you so very much. We appreciate you dropping off this information as well, and looking forward to hearing you all play tomorrow.
Okay, I hope that you'll come to Sundays at 6, July 14th, and that's where we're going to do the professional filming. Trinidad State Junior College Marketing Department is doing that, and I hope you can be part of that.
Thank you so much, thank you. Okay, up, any follow-up?
No, Mayor, I will say, Dr. Hart did drop off some more background information, and so what I'll do is just make copies of that and place it in your mailboxes if you want additional information on the project that he was referencing.
Okay, Council Greggo?
One comment, Mayor, if I may, if we were to give some kind of sponsorship, is there any monies available out there? I know that we had some sponsorship monies, and those are pretty much all given out, aren't they?
So the direction I had received from council is when we created that process of splitting it in half, that we weren't going to take any outside of that process. So we knew when you were awarding it, what you were awarding it against. So I did share with them that unfortunately, we've missed those, and we have dedicated those entire funds for this year.
Okay, alright. Up next, we have ceremonial items, introduction of our new Public Works Director, Greg Magrath.
Thank you, Mayor, and as Greg makes his way up to the podium, I was serious with that. I just want to offer a little bit of background on Greg. We are very, very excited to have him join our team. His first day with the city was this past Monday. He's in the process of moving his family across from Vermont. So it's a big undertaking in addition to jumping into this job with both feet and really kind of running with everything we have going on. I know Greg's not going to want to talk a lot about his background, so I'll just share a little bit of why we're excited. Previously, before coming here, he was serving as the Town Manager for the Town of Bethel in Vermont. And then, prior to that, he was the Public Works Director for the Town of Buena Vista. And so, and he's got other 14 years of combined experience in other communities and all of that. But we're really excited to have someone of Greg's abilities, and then also that he's aware of what it's like to be in a small community, and what to expect, and how to interact with the public. And then, his experience with Buena Vista, knowing the area, really made it seem like a great fit. So Greg, if you want to add anything?
No, I think you said it. I'm really excited to be here, in three days. And when I interviewed, what I really liked about Alamosa was that it looked as though everybody was a team, and all the leadership positions were very supportive of everybody. So when I came on, I'm finding in my first three days that that is actually the case. I've talked with all my department heads, and I've found that they're all in support of not only their people, but everybody else. So I just want to build on that concept of team and keep things moving in the right direction. I really like the way that the city's going. I will say town a million times, I've always worked in towns my whole life, but I'm trying to get used to saying the word "city." But yeah, very, very excited to be here and see good things in the future.
Council Greggo?
Well, welcome to the family, Greg.
Thank you.
And you hit the nail on the head, you do have a good group of guys working for you. And when we lost two people, major people, in your department, these people came together, and they carried the city forward. So you're taking on a pretty good group of people out there, so welcome to our city.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to jump in a little bit with what Council Greggo had said. I wanted to let Greg talk first, too. I think this is a great opportunity, too, to thank Harry and the division heads and the other staff, because we weren't down just a Public Works Director, we were also down a planner. And they've pulled us through an amazing timeframe of a lot of projects, a lot of busyness. They've kept us rolling, and it's during the busiest season, too, with our construction going on. So we are so excited to have Greg on board for a lot of different reasons, but it's also a great opportunity to recognize the staff that we have and the teamwork that they did to get us through this.
I see a big smile on Harry's face back there, too, so he's probably relented.
Yeah, Greg, welcome to Alamosa, welcome to the team, the A-Team. They always bring their A-game as well. And just want you to know that we wish you much success, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alright, the next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar A. Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
I do want to share, it's not relevant to the vote, but I know Counselor Broyles usually pays special attention to the monthly reports from a financial perspective. You might remember Judy has referenced when we are reporting those transfers between the different funds, we're going to be more consistent on that month. So that's until we have that consistency, you will see some of those swings that Counselor Broyles had brought to our attention of one month in 2018, it's a $2 million, and the next, for 2019, it was only $300,000. But that's those inter-fund transfers and when we're recording those. So I just wanted to make sure that council had all that information.
Thank you, Heather. The next item on the regular business is a presentation from an outside agency, the San Luis Valley Federal Bank. They're going to talk with us briefly about their plan of reorganization. Okay, if you all can come up to the podium.
Well, good evening, Mayor Coleman, members of City Council and city staff. I think, first of all, it's great that you have a sized podium for me and my staff. Perfect. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about the plan of reorganization that we would like to implement. It involves forming a mutual holding company. Right now, we are one of five mutual banks left in Colorado. Three of the five are here in the valley, us, Rear Grand Savings and Loan, and Delnor Bank. Delnor Bank has already done what we would like to do, they have formed a holding company. One of the unique things about a mutual bank, much like It's a Wonderful Life and Mr. George Bailey and the Bailey Building and Loan, is that if you're a depositor, you are a member of the bank, and you actually have a vote for actions like this. So we have no stockholders. If you're a depositor, you have one vote per $100 on deposit. I know we have business with some of you, and certainly, we have a good relationship with the city. And by virtue of that, the city has a vote in this process. We have gone through all of the regulatory approvals. The Federal Reserve is involved in this, they have given their preliminary approval. The OCC, Office of Comptroller of the Currency, they're our primary regulator. They have approved as well as the FDIC. So what's next is to have an approval vote from a majority of the members of the bank. The city has the maximum number of votes that is allowed by charter. So we have a federal charter that we operate by, and it prescribes that depositors have one vote per 100, not to exceed 1,000. And that is in place so that a large depositor could not gain control of the organization, especially one from outside the valley. We like the idea of keeping our mutual nature and character, so creating a mutual holding company, which is prescribed by another federal charter option. So we want to adopt that option. It preserves the rights of the depositors from the bank moving up to the holding company. So what we would do is have a three-tiered organization. We have a mutual holding company at the top, we have a stock holding company in the middle, and then we have a stock bank at the bottom. There is no plan in place right now to sell stock at any point in time, but that is an option for the future. And this business is changing, as many of you know very well, so quickly, just like lots of other things, there's lots of disruption in business these days. So it gives us some options to grow the capital of the bank. The only way we can do that right now is through profits, through retained earnings. And if we had the ability to sell some stock, we can raise capital. And if the bank wanted to do an acquisition or a more aggressive growth strategy, we would have additional funds to do that. Our capital right now is one of the strongest in Colorado as a percentage. We're more than three times what's required by the regulators. So we don't need to do this for capitalization purposes. But it gives us that option, if we wanted to do an acquisition, our capital would be stressed if we bought anybody of any size. So that's the main advantage. Number two is we could borrow at the holding company level, and that also gives us a little bit more capital at the bank level. But you can't borrow as much as you can generate through a stock sale. The other third thing we could do is handle mergers in an easier fashion with a holding company in place. With the mutual holding company format, all the bank could do would be to sell a minority of the stock. So you could sell 49.9% of it, and 50.1% would be retained at the holding company level. So you keep the mutual nature of the bank, and the depositors retain control, which is a nice feature. So we think it's a neat grassroots organizational structure, and it would retain that through the holding company. But having the members vote on it, I think, is a good democratic process. It's not the Board of Directors that makes this happen. The Board has voted in favor of this, but we have to have a majority of the members voting in favor as well. So we have about a three-and-a-half week process to do this, and we would really like to have the city's support and vote in favor of this action.
When we discuss this as a staff, it's fairly straightforward, and it seems like a very simple issue on how we would recommend voting. But the city attorney has indicated that we're not authorized as staff to be able just to vote for or against this. And so that's why we invited Dwayne to come and do this presentation, so council can provide direction. We'll need an actual vote from you on to direct us how to fill out the card, the proxy card, in regards to voting in support of the reorganization or against it. So this really is a time that you should ask any questions of Dwayne, and then, once you're completed, hopefully make a motion to provide that direction.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Council Greggo?
You got me before I even hit my button. So you said, how many votes do we have then?
The city has 1,000, that's the maximum. Yes, it's possible for someone to have more than 1,000 as an individual. If you had a joint account, perhaps with a spouse, for example, all those joint accounts have 1,000 maximum. But if you then had your own account with just your social security number, there would be another block of 1,000. But it would cap out. If you had an IRA, you'd also get a separate block for that. And if you had a business that you were the owner of and had a separate tax ID number, you could have another block of 1,000. 4,000 would be the maximum if you had all four ownership structures in place. But the city just has the one ownership structure under the one tax ID, so, yeah.
Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks so much for explaining this, and I'm ignorant to how all of this works, so I apologize for that. But what would be the down, are there any downsides of this? Like what would be some of the risks or any of the fears that people have about going to this process?
Downsides, I don't see anything significant. We have an extra tax return to file, we have an extra regulator, kind of, I shouldn't say sticking their nose in our business, monitoring the bank's activities. Beyond that, there really isn't anything on the downside. There are some concern when mutuals convert to the holding company at the mutual holding company level, that the next step would be a full-stock conversion. And many have done that. But in order for that to happen, the members would have to vote again in favor of that. So the Board does not have the authority to do that. But beyond that, there aren't any downsides, it just gives us some more options. Really, for the members, the people who do business with the bank, they will not notice a thing. The name stays the same. The name of the holding company, the mutual holding company, would be Colorado Mutual Holding Company. And if we decided to do an acquisition outside the valley, that name makes a little more sense for us, because it's not quite so regional. But right now, there's no plan to do that. Yeah, thanks, good question.
Council Bro, I'm sorry, Council Hans?
So I know, I saw Dwayne the other day in the bank, so he told me this was coming. And so I got it in the mail yesterday, and so I read it over, I got two envelopes. But anyway, I read it over.
You got two votes, you have two different account structures.
So anyway, there may be other questions, but I was going to go ahead and put in the motion that we go ahead and adopt, or vote to adopt the plan of reorganization, to reorganize from mutual bank to mutual holding company form of organization.
Okay, Council Greggo?
I'll go ahead and second, and then David.
So we're going to have further discussion, Council Bro.
I was just going to say, there doesn't appear to be any downside for the depositors, is there? No, there isn't, David, and if the bank elected to do a minority stock offering, one of the nice things about that is the depositors are eligible to buy shares of stock in the bank. So that's where that would start, and we would make it available to members of the San Luis Valley community as well, so. Yeah, just to make it clear, you're still under FDIC insurance. Yes. None of that changes. Right, we had to get permission from the FDIC to change the structure, and then to get them to agree to issue a new certificate to us as a holding company and a stock bank. Yeah, so I don't see a downside.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Council Greggo?
One comment, if I may, Mayor. Dwayne, you did say, we do have a good working relationship with you and with all these other bank financial institutions. And whatever we can do to strengthen the valley, I think we should be part of that mixture. But in the past, you guys have come and you've helped the city in different projects, not only yourself, but other of the banking institutions. So we thank you for that, and we thank you that you continue to move into the future. Because as you say, there's so many changes coming, and it looks like you guys are prepared and ready for that change, if it does come, so.
We hope so, you know, things move so quick anymore, it's hard to keep up.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, no further discussion, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you so much, Dwayne.
Thank you, I appreciate the time and for your support.
And then, one final note, thank you for allowing Kwanis to host the Pancake Breakfast tomorrow at the bank.
I was going to say, well, not only that, but is this the 23rd year of sponsorship for the fireworks? So the timing of this is nice, to be able to have a face-to-face and say thank you, so. We greatly appreciate it.
It's a fun thing to do, we get the opportunity to support lots of things in the community, and this is one of those fun things that everybody gets to enjoy, and it's free, sorta, I guess.
Thank you for bringing your staff, we really appreciate all the work you all do in the community as well.
Yeah, we appreciate Andy and his crew, Fire Department, Police Department, everybody helps out with this thing on the fireworks, so thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you. Alright, council. Now to business brought forward by our city staff, Public Works, Heather. Is that you?
I'm sorry, he was, we had a question over here.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead. Eric?
That's alright, we answered it.
Okay.
So this is the public hearing and second reading for this ordinance number 15-2019, which amends the UDC to better deal with housing pallet questions. We went through this issue on first reading with background, and I don't think that council had many questions on that. A couple of things, one is to clarify how you apply the housing pallet concept and add language for determining whether you've got a suburban lot or an estate lot. And then, to change some of the setbacks with respect to the higher-density lots, to reduce those setbacks on higher-density lots, to be more consistent with what they were under the old code when a lot of the development occurred in those kinds of neighborhoods. So unless council has questions of me or anyone else on staff, I think it's ready to open up the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open up a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number 15-2019. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come and make any comments in regards to this, ordinance, please come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see any. Okay, so I will now formally close the public hearing and turn it back over to council. Council Vehill?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 15-2019 on second reading.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, Eric, appreciate that. Okay, the next item, I believe this one is for you, Ms. Holly, Resolution Number 11-2019?
Yes, sir. So this resolution is to conduct a regular city election pursuant to the Uniform Election Code. Municipalities generally conduct elections under CRS Title 31, which is the municipal election code. And in order for us to participate in a coordinated election, it is necessary that we follow CRS Title 1, which is the Uniform Election Code. When coordinated elections first became an option in 1993, the city adopted an ordinance allowing the city to determine on an election-by-election basis whether to utilize Title 1 or Title 31. This resolution specifies that the city will use Title 1 for the November 5, 2019 coordinated election.
Okay. Alright, council, Council Vehill?
Mayor, does this, or Holly, does this need a hearing, a public hearing?
Not the resolution, you'll have an IGA on your next meeting.
So then I move that we pass number, Resolution Number 11-2019.
I second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three, under City Manager Legal, the first reading of ordinance number 16-2019.
Thank you, Mayor. The council has had a work session on the issues addressed by this ordinance, which primarily relate to a moratorium that council enacted concerning head shops and marijuana paraphernalia shops, and where they may be located in the city, that arose out of a question about a potential application for such a shop on, fronting on Main Street. And when that came up, Pat Steenberg, who was acting as our contract land use administrator in the absence of Dan Vaughn, thought that that should not be allowed as inconsistent with the UDC. And I told him, my reading of the UDC was that it would be allowed, but maybe council wanted to rethink that, since it certainly was a question that Pat had. And so, in thinking about that, a number of issues came up. One of them being, do, does council want to have the same kind of limitations for paraphernalia shops that it has for sexually-oriented businesses? And that is located 100 feet from the main highway corridors. Number two, in thinking about sexually-oriented businesses, does council want to have restrictions on those to limit them further to industrial zones rather than commercial business 100 feet off the main highway corridors? Issue number three, should State Street be treated as a main corridor the same way that the 160 and Highway 285 corridors are treated? And then additionally, as that came up in that issue was timing restrictions on temporary signs on vacant lots, and whether those were workable. And part of that arose out of the fact that the way the current sign restrictions are set up... And part of that arose out of the fact that the way the current sign restrictions are set up, a business like a sexually-oriented business or a paraphernalia shop could have essentially quasi-permanent signs, still classified as temporary signs under the UDC, located on vacant lots on, on 160 or 285. In other words, on main corridors, even though the business itself couldn't be there. And the way that the, the timing was set up, there was incentive for investing in kinds of signs like that, which could be inconsistent with counsel's vision for what those corridors should look like. So it's a complicated set of alternatives that are presented in this ordinance, and those are listed in the council communication, and those are listed actually by way of example rather than limitation. So there are even more alternatives that you could think of with respect to these issues than, than I put out there. But one of them is, the proposed ordinance does do the head shop setback of 100 feet off of corridors, including State Avenue. I'd have to look it up now because it's been too long, but I think that the State Avenue limitation as proposed in the ordinance is just from Airport Road north to First Street, I think. No, actually, Fourth Street. And you could take it all the way to First. You could take it all the way to the city limits across the bridge. You could do whatever you want with it. There is the, I, I did put in, in this first draft, a limitation on sexually-oriented businesses to limit those to the industrial zone. You can take that out. You could leave it to where it is now with the setbacks, whether those are to State Avenue as well, or just the highway corridors. You can change the amount of those setbacks. The, the ordinance does change timing restrictions on temporary signs in vacant lots to address that issue that I talked about, and you can, you can massage that whatever way you want to do. And again, that's a representative of all of the broad spectrum of changes you could make to the proposed ordinance on first reading if you want. And you can also just simply pass it and wait to hear whether there are any comments for you to consider when it is up in front of you for a public hearing at your next meeting.
Given that the, the last workshop session that you guys had, we, we somewhat ran out of time. And so the city attorney and the council communication tried to highlight where we thought we had clear kind of consensus, and then areas we just weren't sure, and we had run out of time. So not that you have to stick to that, but one of the areas from a memory perspective was that interest in moving the sexually-oriented businesses to the industrial and adding State Avenue. There's a lot of time we spent on that discussion, but that seemed to be where there was some consensus. The areas that weren't as clear is if, if the marijuana paraphernalia head shops wanted to be the same as that, or still be allowed in the commercial business area. And we didn't really get much time to discuss the signage. So just as a kind of quick recap of where it seemed most we're comfortable the last time we talked about it.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Eric. Are you, are you done?
I am.
Okay, thank you. All right, Counselor Daniel?
Yeah, so Eric, and maybe I'm just reading it wrong. How is number three on the top, the draft of the ordinance presented on first reading, does all four things, changes the zoning in which sexually-oriented businesses are allowed to limit such businesses to the industrial zone? And then the alternative of three below is change the ordinance to eliminate the further? I, I guess I'm missing, I'm missing something, and I don't know what I'm missing. I'm sorry.
Well, so up above, it, the reference is, this draft ordinance does limit it to industrial zone. One of your alternatives is to take that out of there and not limit it to industrial zones.
Thank you. I was reading it wrong.
Yeah, and it's, and when we say consensus, as I recall from the work session, not every counselor seemed to be in favor of limiting it to industrial zones, but I think there was a majority that was, so that's why it's in there as a draft.
Okay, anyone else? Counsel Brawls?
Well, I guess just to keep the ball rolling, I, I'm in favor of having it limited to industrial zones. I think that's the best way to explain that. And if, are we including State Street in with another definition now?
Well, so, there, there are so many options here, it's, it's difficult to keep them all straight. But if you limit it to industrial zones, then the, as you can see on the zoning map that's up there, the only industrial zones that really would be available are primarily on State Street. There is one over there at the very, sort of at the old cement plant area that may have some availability for locating it 100 feet off of the highway. But yes, State Street and the 100-foot limitation is still proposed even in industrial zones to be applicable. So you would limit it to industrial zones, and you would have the further limitation that even in industrial zones, you have to be 100 feet off of State Street, or the highway, as the case may be.
And David, when, when that was discussed during the work session, I think part of why that came up with State Street was, the reason the highways are protected is because those are the main corridors visitors are traveling through town. And I think someone brought up with State Street, when you fly in, that's another corridor through town.
So, so I think that's probably the cleanest way to address that is with the industrial zone and 100 feet setback.
Okay, thank you, David.
Counsel Brawls, I'm sorry. Counsel Gregel?
So I didn't get a chance to be part of the work session, and I had a chance to visit with a couple of counselors. And I, I don't think we even had a chance with you, City Manager, to visit. But David, what you're suggesting, is you're suggesting industrial for what? Both the sexual and the head shops, or, or what is it you're suggesting? On both the works?
So, because that is, that, that is another area, as the city attorney has highlighted, that we can break this all down. So, so there seemed to be consensus on the sexually-oriented businesses, further reducing that down to the industrial. But then the outstanding question that I think you're asking Counselor Brawls is, does that also include tightening up on the marijuana paraphernalia head shop to those same areas as well? Is probably what your question is?
Correct, correct. And, and the reason I ask that is because I think today we have some of those shops within the city.
We do.
And so those, those groups there would be grandfathered in, or how does that work?
Correct. They would be grandfathered in.
And I believe there was one business asking to be able to do that. He wouldn't be, the person wouldn't be able to grandfather in.
Correct.
Correct. Yep, thank you.
You could change what? The, the, the person who wants to sell marijuana paraphernalia. Is he in the, in the Central Business District?
No. So currently, how the code is right now, they're in the commercial business. So if they were to submit an application and have it processed, they, they could do it right now. The question is, do you want to change that to be more restrictive for that?
Right, and it, just technically, they can't do it right now because you have a moratorium. But if, without that moratorium, they, they would be, they would get such a license. And so if you don't change the UDC, it'll go back to the ability to get such a license.
So I'm gonna just stay consistent. I said at the work session that I think we should limit the sexually-oriented businesses to the, what Mr. Brawls has been talking about, and the head shops, of course, outside of the Central Business District, but I don't mind them being on 160.
Counsel Brawls?
With, with the 100, 100-foot setback?
And I will say, at this point, this is first reading, but I'm kind of of the same things as Counsel Veale. I don't see it needing the same level of strictness as sexually.
And just to be clear, that's the way the draft proposed ordinance is currently written. It, it applies, well, I'm sorry, that's not the way it's currently written. It, it does apply the setback to head shops. It does not limit them to industrial zones, but it does apply the setback. And I think what Counselor Veale is saying is he would be in favor of not applying the setback. And that would require a, a vote to change that aspect of the ordinance. And Heather was just suggesting that because there are so many aspects of this ordinance, if someone wants to make a motion other than to approve the whole thing as written on first reading, pick out what change you want to make and do it change by change, if there are a whole bunch of different ones to make. Counsel Gregel?
And that's what I was asking, I was trying to see what, where Counselor Veale was going. And out of the alternatives, what are we looking at there? Which ones were you looking at? Number two?
So Counsel Gregel, one of the recommendations I would have is if you seem to at least have this consensus on the sexually-oriented businesses only, maybe vote on that, have that part done. And then you can discuss the marijuana paraphernalia, and just determine if there's a vote on that or not. And then on the signage. Is, so you may just kind of want to take each one like that. So you may want, to me, the low-hanging fruit seems like the sexually-oriented businesses.
Counsel Veale?
So I'll, I'll make a motion here pretty soon, but I guess the question I have is on the signage piece. Isn't that a whole different discussion than, and maybe another work session to have? Because I know you had brought that, we had, we, we voted on this a year ago, and we're bringing it back up again. Is that right?
We are, but, and because we don't want counsel to feel like when you vote one way, we're, just because we may not agree, we're gonna keep bringing it back. But the, a lot of that discussion was focused on other items, and not necessarily 100% of how it could relate to if there was sexually-oriented business advertisement and that kind of thing. And so that's what prompted staff to, to bring it back up again. If you want a work session, that's counsel's prerogative. If you feel like you can discuss it tonight, that's your prerogative as well.
Eric?
Yeah, and I guess the other thing that, that I was gonna say with respect to that issue is if counsel decides that the setback for paraphernalia shops is not necessary, then the change to the signage probably doesn't become necessary, because that was the reason for that, is that, is that the advertising could be, would be just as much of an aesthetic issue as the shop itself. But if you're not worried about the aesthetic issue of the shop itself, then you don't need to worry about the advertising either. And one way to deal with, you still have the sexually-oriented business signage. You could direct that we include on that setback for sexually-oriented businesses that any signage has to be limited to the industrial zone and setback the 100 feet as well. Ooh. That's what happens when you think on your feet. Heather said, can you do that? That's content-based, and the answer is, that's true. Can't do that. So that's, that's why that signage limitation is in there, is we can't do specific content-based limitations on signs. So you could have sexually-oriented business signs up on vacant lots for that essentially half the year extended period of time.
So Mayor, if I may make the motion, because I think we all agree on this, that to limit sexually-oriented, oriented businesses to the industrial zone...
And add State Street?
And add State Street. Thank you, Mayor Heather.
Okay. We have a motion?
With, with the 100-foot setback?
With the same setbacks that are currently in there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
So then I guess it would be up to counsel to decide if there is enough votes to, to make a change to the marijuana paraphernalia, or if as it's written right now, there is no need for changes and you're okay with it?
As it's written right now, can you remind us again what, what that looks like?
So it is not allowed, and, and City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong. It is not allowed within the Central Business District, which is, let me wait one second. This purple area, the small, it's not allowed there. It is allowed within the Commercial Business District. But it is a type 2 retail, which means is it 200 feet? It cannot be within 200 feet of another type 2.
600.
600 feet of another type 2 retail. But it can be within the, the Commercial Business, and it might be one other zone that's like, that we don't have a lot of. Is it mixed juice?
And it can be right along the highway?
No, it can. Right now, it can be.
The way the ordinance is drafted, it cannot be.
Okay, well then...
But right now, under our existing law, it can be.
Okay, well then I, I don't, personally, I don't see a need to change that.
And I just want to clarify, so then, the way it is now, if there's one there, there's, another one cannot be within 600 feet of it.
A new one?
A new one.
Within 600 feet along the same frontage. So it's not a radius of 600 feet, it's 600 feet along the same frontage.
So is that basically just next door?
No, 600 feet is about a half a block.
Half, okay, I sometimes just don't have that distance.
But, but that radi, the, the point of it not being a radius is important, because if the entrance is on this street and right around the corner, the other entrance is here, that, that can happen.
Counsel Brawls?
And, and what about State Street to the airport?
Well...
For those part, portions of State Street that are in the zone of Central Business District, it is allowed. But for established neighborhood, it is not.
No, it's not allowed in the Central Business District.
I mean, Commercial Business.
Commercial Business, yes.
Commercial Business. So there's portions on State Avenue, and there's portions of Sixth Street and Main Street that it is allowed, because it's in the Commercial Business Zone.
Well, can we prohibit it on State Street? Because I'm concerned about people, our tourists coming in and out.
Why, why would you want to prohibit it on State Street and not on Highway 160?
So right now, let me see if I can make this map a little bit bigger, because it's, it's a little hard. So right now, on Main Street, 160, 285, State Street, any of those entrances that you're thinking of, if they are within this light brown Commercial Business Zone, they are allowed, given they're not within that 600 feet of another type 2. So the question before you is, and this is one where staff, honestly, we were, we were like, this is not something that staff should be weighing in on, which is why this question was coming to you. You, you guys may be fine with having head shop paraphernalia, marijuana paraphernalia on the highways, or you may not be. But that's, this is the discussion we felt was most appropriate for counsel. So right now, if it's in the right zone, it can be on those highways.
But not in the purple, right?
Correct. Not in the purple.
Counsel Hans?
So I have a question. So what, is, is it possible to change the distance to being more than 600 feet?
Yeah.
And even allow, and maybe even covering that idea, that whole radius idea?
Uh, right, yes, you could do that.
Okay. So like a thousand?
You could do a thousand?
Would that prevent a, two, two shops being around the corner from each other?
The radius aspect would.
Yeah, okay.
How many shops do we have right now?
Uh, Sick and Twisted? Oh, the liquor store there, or the tobacco store?
Smoke shop. Oh, it's closed, just... We're going from paraphernalia to a flower shop. So we, we may just have one.
And then I guess my other question is, does this also affect stores that may have different, more mixed merchandise? And so if they have it in their store, but that's not their primary item?
That's the sexually-oriented business definition, where, where that's your, a significant portion of your store's focus. That, that isn't the case with paraphernalia. Paraphernalia, if you're selling paraphernalia, you're selling paraphernalia.
And so if, if a store wants to start carrying it, even if it's not their primary thing, then they would have to get a permit, et cetera, to do that?
Correct. So there's... Correct, so there's not that different threshold of how much it is their business unless you made it exact, like similar to the sexually oriented. But right now, we don't keep track of how much percentage it is of, if they're selling it, they need to be complying with what you guys are setting out.
And you could do that too. That's another in your broad spectrum of options that you have. You could, you could define a, a head shop or a paraphernalia store as one who had a significant portion of their business dedicated to that thing.
Counsel Gregor, then Counsel Daniel.
I, I, I kind of agree with Liz that maybe extend it a thousand, but I don't agree with the radius part of it. You know, if you, if you, six hundred feet, if you go down the block, it's, I could see another four hundred. But when you do a radius, you, you're really cutting up a lot of, of, of area for somebody who, who wants to even get into that kind of business. You're stopping that kind of business period, so. I, like I said, a thousand, I, I don't have a problem with that, but when you start using the term radius, I, I disagree.
Okay, um, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I was more honestly just sort of brainstorming and thinking. Um, I'm also with the idea that we could keep the way it is too. I was just sort of thinking out loud, I guess, to sort of get ideas and feelings for it.
Counsel Daniel.
I just, I don't mean to belabor a point, um, Eric and Heather, when you guys were just now talking. Someone who adds paraphernalia to their business line would now have to sign up for a type two license is what you're saying, correct?
Correct, and it's not how much, it's just if they start selling it, period.
Okay, thank you. Um, and since I haven't said what I, I think about the setbacks and stuff, I, I am fine with paraphernalia shops in our, in the central, not the central business district, sorry, the commercial business district, those, we needed different letters. Um, the, the brown, I'm okay with them in the brown. Um, and then having the, the same kind of, making it a thousand feet, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Um, but I agree with Charlie about the radius. Counsel Gregor about the radius.
Counsel Brawls. Oh, you didn't say anything. I mean, you didn't push, but I thought you were gonna push it. Were you going to? Go ahead.
No, I, I'd.
I could read their minds.
I'd, I'd, I'd agree with, with Council and Daniel.
Okay, all right then, so let's wrap this up, let's get a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna try it. Here we go. Uh, so I move that we, uh, don't change the, ordinance as written, but with, with one minor change in the six hundred feet, a thousand.
Okay, so can I jump in? Cause I'm, I think you're making a motion that you, you don't want to make. So I think you don't want to change the existing, not how, what, not the ordinance attached to the agenda. That you don't want to change the existing requirements other than to add a thousand feet to the marijuana, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, because how it was written in the ordinance proposed for tonight's a little bit different.
Correct.
Does that, is that clear, city attorney?
Uh, yes.
Do, do you need a, a motion?
We do need a motion. Or do you need to restate it?
Please.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that we, we make a change from six hundred to a thousand feet in the current.
Libera's.
In the current ordinance, as written.
Second that, Mayor.
Okay, good, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, and let me just say, I don't think you, so, current ordinance as written, I take to mean the existing codified code, not the proposed ordinance numbers. Okay, got it.
Yep.
All right, start voting, please. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Good job.
If we, if I could, let me translate how I read that instruction to me. Uh, that is to come back to you with a, a revision to the proposed ordinance. That will, um, essentially look the same, except it'll take out the stuff about, uh, the setbacks for the head shops. Uh, and change the existing UDC spacing on head shops from six hundred to a thousand. Um, and then pursuant to your earlier vote, uh, we will keep the proposed ordinance the same as it is with respect to sexually oriented businesses. Yes, and signs.
So we haven't addressed signs yet. So did we vote on that last one?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, so yes, the third one is on signs. So Eric, if once we discuss signs and there's a decision, do they still pass then this ordinance before them on first reading with these changes?
With these changes.
And set it for a public hearing for the next meeting?
Yes, and when it comes before them, uh, for that next meeting, public hearing, it will have these changes made to it.
So before we, we do that final big vote then, um, the question is, is on the signage. So as the draft is before you, um, it was to change that signage. Um, that instead of it just being from May first to November fifteenth, um, that we have two chunks. May first to July fifth and September first to November fifteenth. And again, it only impacts vacant property, um, from a signage perspective. So it's not all property with all signs and all of that, it's only vacant.
Okay, counsel.
And this, this would affect, um, campaign signs on vacant lots, correct?
Since we cannot regulate content, um, it impacts all signage. So it's, it's campaign, it's, it's advertisements, it's, it's all signage because it can't be based on content. Which is why we wanted that break in there, um, because then people are less likely to invest in the, the temporary signage if they're gonna have to take it down. Um, and it's not up a full, however, May through November fifteenth is. But again, this is not the signage people have for, that's on their businesses. It's not a, like a political signs in neighborhoods or anything like that. These are, this is a handful of vacant property that this impacts.
Okay, Counsel Gregor.
So you're talking on these vacant properties, uh, round, uh, early iron, uh, signs, uh, sunshine festival signs.
So they can still go up, it's, they can still go up and we still have the other parts of the sign that dealt with, like those banners and, and how long they can be up and those types of things. This is the temporary sign, so they can still go up within these timeframes or on a, on a temporary basis. This is how long, that this is a further extension of it. So this will not hurt those other types of signs.
Also, you may recall, there is a provision for, if you want to call it public forums, uh, that are not subject to these limitations. So signs on the train pavilion and Olympic Park, and there's a third one, I can't remember where, um, that are not subject to these limitations.
The ball fields out on two eighty-five.
Right.
Sunset.
All right, take a motion. Counsel Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I move, I move that we change the time periods in which temporary signs can be placed in vacant lots. To, uh, be from May first to July fifth with a break in between and starting September first to November fifteenth. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start voting, please.
What, one comment, so, so we're changing the ordinance that we passed a year, a year ago, now we're changing the set, the, the times.
Only with respect to the vacant lot portion of that, but yes, because the concerns that gave rise to the sexually oriented business limitations, uh, and the paraphernalia limitations, but the paraphernalia limitations don't seem to be an issue for you. But the sexually oriented business limitations, um, mean that you could have signage for sexually oriented businesses on those vacant lots for essentially half the year.
So that means, that means if, if I'm a candidate, I have to take my signs down and then put them back up in, at, at another period of time?
On just these vacant lots, so that's three signs.
I disagree because it's such a hardship going out there and putting those signs in the first place, okay? And getting permission from whoever you're gonna get them from. So to go out there and put them up there and then come back and then take them down, you're just making it tough for that candidate. It's, it's tough enough just to run, period. Much less put the signs up. And I, I totally disagree and that, that's why we had changed it. That's why that, that ordinance went the way it did that one time. Now, we're changing it just to, because, I guess, why wouldn't you continue changing ordinance? It's just to, to compliment so many people that.
No, Charlie, I mean, the whole point is if you've got concerns about sexually oriented businesses being on the corridors. Those are concerns that are essentially aesthetic concerns and the signs for such businesses strike those same concerns. So I'm not saying you gotta do it, but I'm just saying you gotta consider it if you consider that you have aesthetic concerns about sexually oriented businesses.
Counsel V Hill.
These vacant lots, if they're, if they're owned by a private, you know, privately owned and someone asks permission to put that sign up there, does this legislation trump that?
Yes, it says you can only have temporary signs on vacant lots for certain periods of time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, please start voting. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried four to, four to two with Counselors Gregor and Counselor V Hill casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you. Under, uh, item B, discussion on timing of potential municipal ballot questions. Oh.
So yeah, so if we can do just the one vote that approves this ordinance with the changes as discussed and sets the public hearing for the next meeting, thank you.
Counsel V Hill.
So Mayor, I move that we, uh, we set a public hearing for all the aforementioned motions and set it for a public hearing on July seventeenth or soon thereafter.
I second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Now I believe we're in the, just finally discussion, timing of potential municipal ballot question.
I'm hoping this one's a little less complicated. Um, as we've discussed through different work sessions, we have an election coming up this November. Um, and one of the items that council does not have a choice on placing before the voters because it was a citizen initiated petition is this question for outdoor marijuana grows. So that is something that will be on the, the, um, ballot for voters to take a look at. The other item that we've talked about and, and have talked about how significantly important it is to the, the city is the Transportation Trust Fund. And looking at a half cent dedicated sales tax for streets. Um, and how much of a difference that can make for the quality of our streets and the quality of life and economic development and those things. We've been working hard with our volunteer groups and council's been looking at some of those priorities and we'll be making some decisions on that here soon. And so there's gonna be a lot of energy that goes into that because, um, it's hard to ask people to look at an increase in sales tax and that's a big ask. And so there's gonna be a lot of work that, that's put into that. The other item that we've discussed in the past bringing before voters is, um, taking a look at how easy it is for the amount of signatures for citizens to force an election and have that cost. And if it's representative of the community. And so we have talked about, um, maybe needing a certain percentage from each ward, um, maybe a little bit higher number. And then also that it can't force a special election, that it would just be an election on the next scheduled one. Um, and we still feel that is very important. What we're worried about from a staff perspective is that also will take a lot of education and information. And we're worried that if we're having too many messages going out to the public, that it, it could create confusion and it could risk both of those. And so, um, what we wanted to bring back before you tonight is just to see if council, um, would maybe want to postpone that one till twenty twenty. Um, and that would allow time to further develop it, do some education. But it also allows us to really focus on the dedicated street sales tax.
Okay, all right, counsel, what are your thoughts? Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I am in support of pushing it so we're not sending out too many messages. I think, I do think it's an important initiative, but I don't think it has to happen right now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hensley.
Ditto.
Counselor V Hill.
Is, is, is two messages overwhelming?
Counsel Daniel.
What I think it does is it gives the, um, I do think it is overwhelming when there's this much information about it. So changing the way people do petition oriented kinds of things, I think that takes a lot of education and time and effort and energy. I think understanding the reasons why we need the transportation sales tax. I think spending that time and that amount of education and, and stuff, I just think it's a lot of information that has to go out for both of them. I think if one of them was simpler, I don't think it would be that, that much. But I don't think either one of them is a simple issue for our community to try to like balance between the two.
And, and remember, it's actually three because the other Alamosa question is that citizen initiated marijuana petition question. So when you, when you get your ballot, it's got three city ballot issues on it. At which point even voters like me start to get voter fatigue like, hey, this is, this is your job, guys, don't bring this stuff to me.
Okay, Counselor V Hill, or Counselor Hensley?
So, and I also think adding to that, I already know on the state level, we've got a very critical one there as well. Um, there's two in particular, um, that I think also will need some education. And already just from a CML standpoint, um, definitely quite a bit of interest and support for that as well, so.
Okay. All right, so do you need a consensus of who would like to just focus on the, uh, transportation sales tax for this?
Is there anyone that would want us to still do both?
I mean, I, there, it sounds like there's enough consensus up here not to do both, but I just want to make sure we get that on twenty twenty because we have all said up here that we didn't think it's fair, that we've passed legislation or we, we sent things to a vote or we work diligently through work sessions and community input. And just because a group of people don't like the way it turned out, a minority of people didn't like the way it turned out, they want to, uh, overchange that. And we, and I don't think that's right.
Okay, thank you, Counsel V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's the direction we needed.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have, uh, committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? Counselor Hensley?
Alrighty, I've been going to some committees. All right, so the first one is I went to the tree board. And again, as always, they have so much passion, it was really neat to go to it. Um, we do have two new co-chairs. Um, so Adam Moore and Megan Dudley are the two new, new co-chairs for the tree board. And there is some discussion of them considering changing their name to the Tree and Landscape Board, which kind of then encompasses a little bit more. So there was some initial discussion on that, um, so we'll see where that goes. But it sounded very interesting and it does then, obviously, especially, um, with the whole idea of less and less grass and trying to do more things where it conserves water, so it kind of covers that as well. So that was really exciting. Um, then I also went to the golf board. And the good news is the new system got, did get put up and it's real exciting and works well. But obviously with all this wet weather, we haven't had to use it, uh, really. And actually obviously gone to the other extreme. And so the golf course is really, really having a tough time, um, with two thirds of the golf course being, um, affected by water. Um, and so I know in women's league, we haven't had, everyone, every week's been canceled. I think men's, they've been canceling some tournaments already. So every day is just that hope that that water will go down. So it's been a bit of a challenge. And then the other thing is Woody's is moving. Um, and so I don't have the exact date in front of me, but it is middle of July, I want to say July fourteenth, but don't quote me on the date that they will be no longer at the golf course. Um, so there was some initial discussion and the idea at this point is going back to what they had done. Obviously, there's been a lot of changes there throughout the years, but that idea of going back with the idea of trying to work with it, um, renting it out for events. Um, and that people will bring in their own caterers, that type of thing. And potentially, and I know Holly, somebody's gonna reach out to you with the idea of them going back to getting their alcohol license and hopefully getting a temporary one, that type of thing. But anyway, um, and be able to make a little bit money off the alcohol sales. And so anyway, just, that's where we're headed and, um, I guess that's it on those. They are at the Nestle Toll House.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor Gregor, then Counsel Daniel.
Okay, uh, before I give my report, uh, so I thought we had a, a contract with them through October.
So they are going to break the contract and what they're doing is they're gonna go ahead and pay. Um, so I don't, again, I don't want to quote because I don't have the exact notes, but with that idea that they will pay the utilities, et cetera, uh, through. through that timeframe. And they're thinking that their deposit will cover that. And so they're trying to obviously do it in the best way they can.
I had, I also had a Recreation Advisory Board report. We met on the eleventh. The group talked about the CIP plan, got some little direction of where they wanna go. We discussed the Tovol, I don't even know how to say it, Mall Trail, that's coming along. They did, talked about the golf course, that the irrigation part is almost, pretty much ninety-nine percent up. Goco Connect Fishing and Fund Grant Updates. They gave a bunch of information. Do we put one of these deals in the reading files so if somebody wants to read the minutes and stuff on that Heather?
We attach the approved minutes to the agenda. So they're usually a little bit delayed because we wait for the advisory board to approve the minutes and there's no corrections and then we attach it to the agenda.
All right. That's all I have Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Grego, Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you Mayor. So I attended the Lead Policy Committee since our last meeting and that, that program is going well. They are really talking about expansion and looking at going out into other communities as well as ensuring they're serving all of the current clients that they have. I also think they're looking at sustainable funding, whether or not the state is going to be able to fund us or if there are other grants available. So that is a big, the funding issue is going to become bigger and bigger as the time moves on. As part of the Rio Grande Farm Park, they are looking at changing their MOU with the Local Foods Coalition. There will be more updates on that later, but it is something that they're exploring and checking out, I'm pretty excited. And they did just update their website and they're doing some really cool things there. And there was not a Housing Authority meeting this month. They did not have enough members to make a quorum.
Okay, thank you Councilor Daniel. And we are working on trying to fill that committee, okay? Alrighty. Up next, we have staff announcements.
So Andy, if you wanna come up, one of the questions that Councilor V. Hill had asked about is where we are on the landscaping, the Water Smart landscaping. You might remember, we were really utilizing Dan's skillset as a landscape architect and we had seven locations that we were able to look at and work on based on a grant that we received through the Colorado Water Conservation Board. Dan was able to design four of those locations and we did bid out those projects and North River Greenhouse was the one that provided a quote and we have ordered the materials. Some of it has come in, we've put out some of the edging and the irrigation for some of those and I'll get into the exact locations. So those have started. For the ones that Dan did not design, we are utilizing Stephanie to finish those designs and then we will have the same process, which is to bid out the materials to purchase. We anticipate still getting all of this done this year. But then to talk about each location, so Highway one sixty Richardson Gateway is one that Dan was able to have designed. This is one where we do have the irrigation in, the, a lot of the edging and those types of things. We're just waiting on the plants, I believe. You jump in and correct me at any point.
I'll jump in. So most of the plants on that one are there. I don't know if you've drove by and noticed we're missing six plants and a specific color of crusher fines. So that one's the closest to being done.
Airport Gateway is another one that Dan was able to design. We needed to finalize the location though, from a utility perspective and right of way of where that's gonna go. Do we have the materials in? Have they, I know they've been ordered, have they, are they in?
Still waiting on materials from North River on that one.
But they have been ordered and so we're in constant communication with North River to get those in. The Olympian Park, we, we're still gonna get it done this year, but we've got this other department that is working on First Street and that might be impacting what the final design is for Olympian Park. And so we did order the materials and they will be in, but we're waiting to kinda really dig into that one until First Street is complete. Is that correct Andy?
Yeah, and our guys can't access the east side where the project is right now. So that was a little bit of a curve ball.
It's Public Works for ya. Another location is what we call the South Gateway. We have ordered items for that. We do need to figure out the irrigation on, if we're gonna do something that's more solar powered or something, or if we're boring under, or some different things like that. Anything else on that one?
That one, you know, you get a lot of emissions from vehicles, so Parks is concerned. We might reduce a little bit of the plantings and the green to be a little more rock oriented and...
And boulders.
And boulders because, and in order to get irrigation there would be boring under two eighty-five. And so we're looking at more, some water storage and solar and battery powered options for the irrigation there. So we're just refining that one a little bit more.
The three that are left to be designed, I've checked in with Stephanie, she is ninety-eight percent done with the design. So hopefully within the next few weeks, we can review those designs, sign off on them and get something out to get quotes on the pricing. And so those three is the City Hall, which is probably the biggest one, this area here by City Hall, Boyd Park, and then Sunset Park. So any questions on the Water Smart side?
And those seven projects are the ones that we prioritized, correct?
Correct.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Andy. Okay, is that it?
Eric has two items for you.
Couple items for you. The first is the opioid litigation. Not much is occurring there. There's activity primarily in the form of negotiation on the multi-district federal litigation that our case is part of. But just to update you most recently, there's been a motion to certify a negotiating class, which is a strange thing that apparently hasn't happened before in multi-district litigation. And the idea would be that in order to entice the defendants, the opioid manufacturers and distributors, into settling to give them an overall global settlement by certifying a class, as in class action litigation, so that they know that there aren't gonna be unknown number of other lawsuits out there because the whole class would have been taken care of. If that happens, we will need to agree with Alamosa County how funds get split as between the city and the county because the class certifications won't go down any finer than the county level. So we will, we, Jason and I will be having some discussions about that. I presume that we can work together logically to get that done, if indeed the class certification does happen. So that's the opioid update. And then I just wanted to let you know that the city will be signing on to an amicus brief being filed by the Colorado Municipal League concerning litigation about the local ethics ordinances of home rule cities. The, what are they called? The Independent Ethics Commission of the state has asserted that home rule cities have to have adopted ethics codes that almost exactly mirror the state ethics code in order to apply their own ethics code rather than the state's. That is inconsistent, I think, and CML thinks with the constitutional provision that governs that. Our own ethics code would not meet that criterion. So we are joining on with CML on that, just in case you wonder about litigation that sees Alamosa's name on it, that's what that is.
Thank you Eric. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Local Liquor Licensing Authority Action, Consent Calendar B. Councilor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, council comments. Okay, Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you Mayor. I would like to personally thank Mayor Coleman, Heather Brooks, and Holly and her staff and Judge McDonald. My sister Emma was, is in town. She's doing a, like an immersion. She's shadowing people in the three branches of government. And she spent the day with Holly and the judge on Monday and with Heather yesterday, seeing what they do and how government works. She didn't come tonight because she went swimming. It's her summer vacation. But she got her needed hours for that and I just appreciate you guys for helping, helping her with that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor V. Hill, I was very impressed with your sister to be at that age and to pay attention to government at that level. I just wish I would have paid as much attention when I was her age. And I think she has a bright future for her. And she has her priorities straight too, you know? Sometimes you gotta have a little fun and swimming is not a bad thing.
Well, and I just wanna point out, when the city attorney asked her which branch she preferred, it was the executive branch over the municipal court branch. So I just was gonna point that one out.
Okay, Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you Mayor. So I have a couple. First, I wanna say thank you for the flashing yield sign by the circle, roundabout, whatever we call it. I do see people slowing down. I do think it has made an impact, so thank you. I know it's pain, but I appreciate the hearing that from the people that live there, so thank you for that. The second thing, I was driving by the construction on Victoria today and it is super exciting to be able to see where the new road will be, so thank you for that. Is it gonna be stop signs again? Do we know what the traffic control is? Is it gonna, the traffic control will be the same?
Yeah, we weren't able to get it further back from the intersection, so you can't really do a light from a stacking perspective. So it's gonna be back to stop signs, but hopefully with them lined up, it will alleviate some of the issues we were having.
Great, thank you, thank you. And then I really just wanted to thank Harry and his team and welcome. You are so glad that you are on board. You guys have worked so, so hard and so thank you for that. And I always see your crews out with smiles. No one's been grumpy to us anyway. And so I really appreciate that, that I know it's been tough. And so thank you so much for all the things that you guys have been able to pull together. You're doing a really great job. And then just happy Fourth of July everyone. I'm really proud to live in this country and be able to celebrate Independence Day, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Hensley?
So I'll take it even a step further in regards to thanking staff. I think all of our staff, because summertime is just so busy, Rex, everybody is, we got all these things going on and we're walking in circles and always on the go. So taking that moment just to really appreciate and how lucky we are here in Alamosa. And so that's to everybody and to all the staff. I think they do a great job. On a second note, I know everybody has gotten emails and stuff, but just as a reminder that next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we are having our CML Executive Board Retreat here in Alamosa. So we are gonna showcase, I wanna thank Holly especially. She's really been helping put this together. And obviously I know we still have a few things still to do till it happens. So it's one of those things, when you do an event like this, there's a lot of work that goes behind it. And so really thanking Holly for all of her work behind the scenes. We will have, so the Executive Board will come into town Thursday evening and you have all been invited with a guest. We are gonna do that at the Ruby Slipper. We've reserved part of the restaurant, so it'll be saved for us. So it'd be great if some of you could come, or all of you would be awesome to welcome the exec... Thursday is the Ruby Slipper. Then Friday, all day, we have our retreat. And then Friday evening at Nino's, we also will have another dinner, which all of you are invited to that dinner as well. And so the Friday evening dinner is at Nino's. On that dinner, we have invited actually quite a few from the other cities and towns, county commissioners, all of the different people as well. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that dinner. And then just so you know, is on Saturday, we're gonna do our field trip and we will do a historical tour of Alamosa early in the morning. And then we will be taking a field trip to the sand dunes and showing off our sand dunes. So anyway, just wanted to let you know what's going on there. So very proud of the fact that we'll be showcasing our city for this retreat.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilor Hensley. Okay, Councilor Grego?
I didn't know, is this the weekend, I mean, the meeting we're supposed to give information about our CML? I know Councilor V. Hill wants us to report on when we go to these conferences.
So I had sent a question to council on, in the past, you guys have wanted a separate work session? I don't know, I'm not trying to push that. So my question is, do you want a separate work session or do you wanna discuss it during this time on the agenda?
I'd rather discuss it now than work session. I know Councilor V. Hill enjoys work sessions and being here all the time, so. I'll give a small little synopsis of, we, majority of us went to the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference, the eighteenth through the twenty-first. We missed you, Councilor V. Hill. We had a really great meeting with Exile. They gave out a lot of great information. We went through a lot of different workshops. One of the ones I really enjoyed was the benefits of Parks and Recs capitalizing on results. And that was done by one of our staff people, Andy, did a great job. There was a lot of participation. They even shifted him to different rooms and people finally found the room and filled the room, so. And last but not least, Liz was now the new president of CML Board, so. That's a very small deal. All of us went to different workshops. I know my buddy David here had a last day where they had a fire, he had to evacuate and so he got initiated just right.
And Councilor, the municipal hero, if you wanna talk about that as well?
Oh yes. Yes, Jamie was presented with the plank for municipal hero. He really, he brought his whole family along, he enjoyed it. We were pretty much in the spotlight at CML, so, thank you.
Thank you for that summary and brief update, Councilor Grego. Councilor Brawls?
I was gonna say the same thing about CML. This is my first meeting, I really enjoyed it. I'll send my notes to Councilman V. Hill. But congratulations Liz for being president. That's a great honor for the whole state, so you'll do a great job, so. But I did enjoy it, gained some bits and pieces of knowledge and appreciate the whole effort that went into it and thanked the city. And again, Happy Independence Day to everyone.
Thank you, Councilor Brawls. Councilor Daniel?
I'm sorry, I forgot two things and I was reminded by Councilor Grego, so thank you. The Colorado Women in Government Association met up there and they are actually kind of revamping how they're doing things and there's some really cool things, I think, happening and coming. And so I will be posting some information and sharing some information on Twitter and sharing that with the city because I think there's some really cool things that are going to happen with that. And then also, I was notified recently that I am appointed as an ex-official member to the Safety Net Subcommittee of the Behavioral Health Task Force. And so I'm very, very excited about that. I don't get to vote, but I get to go to all the meetings that will be happening twice a month. And so if anyone has anything they want me to bring to that table, whether that be city staff about behavioral health issues or council members or any community members, I'm happy to bring those forward, but it really is quite an honor to be able to serve, to bring the issues of the San Luis Valley to the forefront as well as noting that there are several members from the valley represented on the state steering committee, the subcommittees, and I was really impressed with the fact that they chose rural areas. And so I do think that the state did a good job, which we don't always say. I do think the state did a good job of trying to find diverse representation.
Thank you very much, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Hensley?
I'm gonna just add one more thing. I would like to thank everybody from staff who was at the CML conference to my fellow city council. How much you guys all campaigned for me, wore the bright colored shirts. Everybody you spoke to, definitely you said something in support because one of the challenges was even though I was up for president, I had to rerun for the executive board. So I had to win the executive board first, then be voted on for president. So it was honestly a lot of voting going on this whole time. But you all did such a great job and really supported me. I heard you all the time, putting your two cents in. So I just wanna thank you all and also staff and everybody who did that, so I appreciate it and I hope to represent us well.
Thank you. Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you Mayor. Charlie, thank you for your update. Thank you, Mayor. Charlie, thank you for your update on CML. I'm glad to know all the stuff that happened. I want to know what you learned at these little sessions. Because, because as, if, if, as you remember, it's because of some of these sessions, we were able to get the Ladue Crossing done, the LEED program. So there is a lot of good things in those breakout sessions. And I don't think we need a work session for it, Heather. Maybe just some talk amongst counselors will be fine. Thank you.
I do want to say, I'll take a look at my notes, but right off the top, I feel that they had a very good session on legalities of working with your homeless population and some of the policies that other cities have and how they're also doing public outreach that I think is going to really, it's really timely for us as we're trying to look at doing better in this area. So I think there is a lot of takeaways there. I also was able to attend from an opportunity zone session and, and some takeaways for entrepreneurship and opportunity zones and, and those types of things. Great presentation on Parks and Rec. I want to also give a, a different type of shout out to our Parks and Rec staff. I attended another session where the new director from Goco was there and he was reviewing a lot of what the programs are at the state level. Our Parks and Rec staff so on top of it that we were already aware of a lot of it. So he was talking about the Inspire Grant and, and, you know, and those types of things, the Connect Grant that, that we've applied for and, you know, those aspects. And so it's just amazing to have our staff so keyed into those aspects at the state level that we're in step with what's going on. And so just a, just a great resource to be able to do that.
Thank you, Heather. Eric, did you want to make any comments? You were there.
I can send my notes as well, but I do have a number of them. And one of them I will discuss with you in the executive session. We need to, we need to think about how we do council employee evaluations. And I got some good ideas from attending that session.
Good. Okay, I too, I was very proud of the representation that we had at CML. Alamosa has a lot of positive things that's going on, but we, we couldn't do this if we didn't work as a team. And I can truly attest to the fact that being in CML, you could see the teamwork. All of us were not able to go to the same sessions, but we broke up and spread out as a team to cover as much information and gain as much knowledge as we needed. But I was so impressed going into some of the breakout sessions and then seeing a presentation or hearing someone say something about Alamosa. So that means that everybody's working well together as a team. And once again, that team acronym stands for together, everyone achieves more. And I hope that we continue to work hard together so we can achieve great things. Thank you. Alrighty, next, executive session.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session for personnel matters, evaluation of the city manager. Third meeting, evaluation of city attorney, first meeting, and evaluation of the municipal judge, second meeting.
I will second. Do we have to identify the revised statute or no?
You know, this, that came up on a city attorney listserv post and you would be amazed how uptight some city attorneys are about that. But my position is that it is adequately identified in the agenda.
Then I second the motion as it stands.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Did we get everybody?
Missing one.
Missing one. Alright, thank you. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.